Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Prowlus?
Here.
And Jones is absent for now.
Thank you.
You have a court.
We're all, we're all virtual at the moment besides our city attorney and assistant city manager it looks like. Okay. All right, let's kick things off. Thank you for the role. And before we start, I do want to remind the rules and government committee members, members of the public to follow our code of conduct. At our meetings, this includes commenting on the specific agenda items only and addressing the full body. Public speakers should not engage in conversation with the chair, council members, or staff and all members of the rules committee. Staff and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. And repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting may result in removal from the meeting. And so with that now, we will go ahead and kick off with our first item. And that is going to be the review for the final agenda of November 8. And we're starting on page four. And five. And six. And seven. Eight. And nine. And 10. And 11. And then I think we have an ad sheet. Nope, we have an ad sheet there. Okay. And let's go to members of the public on this one. And Tony, I'll ask you. You'll make note, obviously, if anybody's in person. Thank you.
Yeah, I will. We have no, nobody in person. Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Our last public rules November government before election time. Hi to everyone. I wanted to comment quickly on your, on your consent calendar. You have a couple safe, warm, warm stations. Developing for, one on the west side and one at the Roosevelt area. One, I think one is at the West Valley Library and then the other is the Roosevelt Center. Warming stations this, this winter. Is it possible to consider a warming station on the east side? I don't know how practical that is, but I just thought I would mention it at this time. I know the Tully area is really uncomfortable to you guys to do that, but I don't know. I just thought I would put it out there that a station maybe needed somewhere on the east side too. And that the other item is 8.1. You're going to talk about the safe parking program of the VTA. And what they're doing. And just a thank you that you're bringing such an item to council session. There was an important conversation here last week about RV issues. And what can be safe RV parking issues maybe. Good luck into the area ideas of Mountain View and their RV and safe parking programs they're creating. They're creating a whole bunch of things actually that can be really interesting to rely on and consider. And just good luck on, on, on addressing these sort of issues at this time. And thanks a lot for, for having this VTA safe parking program endorsement on your agenda next week. Thanks.
Back to the committee.
Okay, if we can get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move approval agenda with the ad sheet.
Second.
Great, thank you. And I'm seeing either hand, so roll call vote please.
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
That was me, sorry. Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That motion passed unanimously. That takes us down to the review for our November 15 draft agenda. Let me pull that up. Okay, and we'll start at page four.
I'd like to.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
On page four, there's an 11 a.m. start time.
Great, thank you. Okay, and five. Six. And seven. And eight. And nine. And 10. Right, and 11. And 12. 13. And 14, I believe that. Oh, no, we got a little more, sorry. 14 and 15. Okay, that'll conclude. Okay, and we'll go to members of the public first.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. You have your, your eight items. Well, 8.1 is downtown residential high-rise program. And then 8.2 is high housing crisis work plan. Interesting combination to place on the same agenda right next to each other. So you guys are thinking about issues and how, you know, the riches can help the, the housing crisis planning also together. So thank you for that and, and good luck on, 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 on addressing these sort of housing crisis issues for ourselves, what can be decided. And a good, good note for people like Raul Prowlus to end on, I think. Thank you. I also wanted to, yeah, I'm hoping Raul Prowlus will continue his good efforts and his, his good intentions and work in, in housing issues at the end of his term. I also wanted to comment, there's a really important item that has just totally left my brain, but here it is. 5.1 Downtown Transportation Plan. I'm so interested to see the future, what you guys will be talking about at this item. Not only to better develop some really good initial ideals and planning that you have for the future of the downtown area with a lot less cars. That really addresses the awesome concept that we have to consider a future life without so many cars and without so many single occupancy vehicles. That has to be a full community effort to learn how to do that. And I, just amazing that the city of San Jose is working on it. The city of Santa Clara and their housing needs is, is wanting to address, you know, affordable housing needs, how to address that sort of issue. San Diego, where I'm at currently, they're asking the same sort of questions. So a really important item coming up that I hope can really lay down some really honest details of how we can work on these issues. Thanks.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. And if we can get a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, and I don't see any hands, so if we can get a roll call vote please.
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. And we'll move down to our consent agenda. And we'll go to members of the public first.
Blair?
Hi, the future work on the west side of affordable housing issues of San Jose and Chappy Jones District, that's involving less parking and more transportation issues as well. So, boy, just a really great item in a few weeks at council. Thank you. I wanted to offer an amazing fact of life. I'm just amazed by life at this time that councilperson Jimenez is again, he's traveling, he traveled to Tijuana in early October. And I didn't make that clear back then. I'm sorry I didn't. I felt he could do some interesting work there. He's now going in February to a sister city conference in South Africa, which is just stunningly beautiful. I mean, so many issues that he can address in being there around the world, you know, including, I think, South Africa has a really good understanding, a more neutral, good position on how to address the future of Russia and Ukraine. Good luck with that. Good luck on how to talk about, you know, Chappy Jones was at a, a, a national conference in Washington DC about African-American issues. The connections there can be amazing to me. So really a good luck to what Sergio, councilperson Jimenez can bring back from, from that trip. And real good luck to him. Good luck to the mayor too in Egypt and, and how we can talk about, you know, real progressive ideals in, in the work that he's going to try to bring back as well. And I think that's about it for me at this time for this item. Just, I'm pretty amazed. Thanks a lot.
Back to the committee.
Thank you. And can we get a motion to approve the consent?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, and I don't see any hands, so roll call vote please.
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll take us down to item 11. And this is maximizing affordable homes with projects receiving city financing memo from the mayor, our vice mayor and councilmember Carrasco. And I see we have an early consideration form and we have the mayor on here. Mayor, did you want to go to the early consideration form from staff first or did you want to speak on it?
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to listen.
Okay, so Lee?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Chair. Staff does have an early consideration form. It is recommended by staff that it is green and work that we can do. And if the committee has any questions, our esteemed director from the Housing Department, Jackie Morales-Fran is in the audience.
Okay, great. Then I'll pass back. Mayor, would you like to speak on it first or should we go to members of the public?
I'm happy to go to the public.
Okay, let's go to members of the public then first time.
Okay, I was giving it a minute, but there are no hands for Blair. Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to thank yourselves with no public comment. I just wanted to take a moment just to thank yourselves for working on these issues. I hope we can do it. You know, with, with a good, good heart in mind and openness and how to consider these issues can be from all of us. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
Okay, back to the committee. I don't see any hands. Mayor, did you want to speak on this one or are you happy?
I don't even have anything to add beyond what's in the memo, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll look for hands from my county mayors. If not, then I'll look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Oh, okay. Then let's do roll call vote please.
Arenas? Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll take it to item C2. Now, this is a city-initiated general plan amendment for public quasi-public land use designation, defining permanent supportive housing memo from our mayor, the vice mayor, and councilmember David. And we also have an early consideration form. And so, well, let's go to Lee first on the early consideration form.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Again, for this early consideration form, staff is recommending a green light. And staff is here from PBC and Housing for any further questions.
Okay, and let's go to the members of the public.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Same as the last item, just good luck and how to have a good openness to all points of view for both of these items. Good luck to your efforts. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, controversial items. Mayor or councilor, does any hands up? So I'm happy to take a motion if nobody wants to say anything. I know, Mayor, you always say, don't steal defeat from the jaws of victory, so.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion, all second. And with no hands, then Tony, can you do a roll call vote please?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you for joining. Yes, we'll go to open forum now.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Seems like you had an interesting meeting last night. Thank you. Or yes, all day yesterday, actually. I wanted to, I guess, first learn how to try to shorten my words and offer that I hope that we can learn to simply acknowledge how to, to acknowledge the concept of there's the war in Ukraine and that there is, there is a way, the initial negotiation process is about, you know, how it could be a feature of a two-state solution, basically. How there can be an east and west Ukraine. And that's the starting point of negotiations. We need to be more clear about that. And I think a lot can follow by simply making that clear and open. And, and, and it makes something clear for all sides to weigh in. And it doesn't actually serve one side more than another, I don't think, in this country by, by simply making that the point of what, what negotiation is about for this issue. So with that all said, I wanted to thank Sean Cartwright, who brought up an amazing good point yesterday that I think there used to be a way that homeless sweeps of work where there was a little bit more advanced warning more often about sweeps taking place. And I hope we can continue those good efforts to really give people warning when sweeps are taking place. That's something really, I think, necessary to consider and work towards and be proud of ourselves that we work in those good ways of human rights and care for other people. And to conclude, I've been trying to bring the county, Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors a lot, that they never, their closed session reports never ever speak about what they speak at closed session time. Why is that? Why is it so closed? You know, with their recent new county executive hiring, I think that presents a problem about transparency that we have to work on a bit at the county level. Thanks.
Back to the committee.
Thank you. Tony, I did see Gail's hand go up and then came down. I'm assuming maybe she did that on her own.
Yeah, we didn't put her hand down.
Okay, we'll give you a second, Gail. Okay. Let, let's go to Gail. Maybe she's having trouble with her hand up there.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't know what I was doing. Am I speaking?
Yes.
Yes, Gail.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much. First of all, thank you. First of all, there's a couple issues here. Number one, I think when somebody is speaking at council and or rules, they should say their name. We all know who was speaking last night, but they don't give their name. And I think the mayor has to make sure the name is there and that we know who is talking. Secondly, I'm sorry, Blair, but you don't have a clue what you're talking about with these sweeps. These sweeps are done completely wonderful. I'm sorry. Okay, that was bad. I apologize. But the sweeps are done perfectly. They are given notice. San Jose Beautify is doing a wonderful job. And I'm a little, I apologize for saying that. A little sick and tired of the lies that are being said about San Jose Beautify. They have treated these unhoused folks like they're own and they've gone over and above everything that is expected. Believe me, I am at Columbus every day, seven days a week, and they are going over and above. And I'm a little tired of hearing a person talking negative about them and bringing ex-staff back. There's a reason why I go and ex-staff. So please do not listen to, anyway, so it's good. I want to thank all the Beautify staff for what they're doing. They were out there today in the rain, working, trying to have people get rid of a lot of their, their stuff that they don't use, haven't used. And they are wonderful. And everybody from the council should be proud of Beautify San Jose. And let's listen to them, not to other folks. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
Okay, thank you very much. And somebody called Chappy and told him I ran a more efficient meeting with him with two sick kids at home, so. Meeting a journey.